All right, good morning, everyone. Today's date is May 10, 2021. It's 9:00 AM. We're here to start our meeting. The first item is our pledge and invitation by Harold King.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious God, we thank you for granting us another day. Keep us safe as we go through the days and weeks ahead in Grand East Commissioners Court, the wisdom to make great decisions for the county and the city of Pointe. And bless our armed forces, men and women, as they go through and keep us safe here at home. These are all the blessings we pray in your Son's name. Amen.
Well, welcome, everyone. Hope everyone had a good Mother's Day weekend. First item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular meetings of April 26, 2021, special meetings of April 23, 2021, and April 30, 2021. Y'all have all had a copy of those minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve those writs?
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Purnell. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. The next item on the agenda is the auditorium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first item I have are budget amendments. And the first budget amendment I have is for the courthouse insurance recovery. And this is to recognize unbudgeted revenue for courthouse for repairs of water damage to the juvenile probation building. And the revenue received was recorded in insurance recoveries. And that amount is fifteen thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Okay. You've heard the request on the budget amendment from insurance recovery in the amount of fifteen thousand, two seventy-five, seventy-seven. Do I hear a motion to approve this budget amendment?
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
My next budget amendment is also for the courthouse insurance recovery. And this is the expense side of the damages to recognize the unbudgeted expense for the repair of water damage to the juvenile probation building. And the amount is thirteen thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars, and it was paid to Louis Flores.
I don't know. Seems like they don't work a lot. They have to take up pretty much pretty damn much.
All right. So it is, you've heard the budget amendment, the amount of thirteen thousand, seven seventy-five for insurance recovery and paid to Louis Flores. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Purnell. Do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next item we have is from the treasurer. Ida called me this morning. She was not feeling well, so, and basically said she didn't have anything to present other than Ida's C. And she said she had talked to Harold and he was going to present that.
Yeah, well, what we're discussing is David Hapley, the special projects coordinator. After going back with Jimmy and Ida, you know, from the time that job was accepted, it's grown to more responsibilities and all that. And we decided, coming to court today to ask, because the buddies in the budget were asking if we can raise the starting salary up to seventeen point eight, which will be fifteen ninety-sixty-one biweekly, which is nineteen eighty-eight an hour. That way we can get that job into the pay scale where it needs to be for the applicants and all that. Because most of the applicants that we talked to, that was their pay scale, was in that range. So I'm putting out in a form of a motion to raise the special projects position to what I just explained, and then we're going to put it back out and advertise and add everything we have left.
Okay. All right. So you've heard the motion to raise that to pay group seventeen point eight, which is nineteen eighty-eight per hour. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Thank you, Harold. All right. The next item we have is our, is under my items. Let's drop the UMC. I presented that first quarter report from UMC on Friday. Do I hear a motion to approve that first quarter report from UMC in regards to their EMS? Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Purnell. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. The next item I have is the Hill Center EMS reports for April 2021. They had twelve transfers, seventeen EMS calls, sixteen of those within the city, one outside the city, for a total of twenty-nine total calls, two no transports. They had twenty-eight billable runs. They had a net, they had a total income for the month of twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars and forty-five cents. They had total expenses in the amount of twenty-one thousand, seven eighty-four point five eight, or a net income of a negative eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-four dollars for the ten. Any questions about the Hill Center EMS report for April? Do I hear a motion to approve that report?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And then the next item I have is the NACO, which is the National Association of Counties. We have an annual membership due request for seven hundred twenty-five dollars. Melinda said she did go back and check, and that she could not find where we had ever belonged in that organization. But I would recommend that we join that association. They've been instrumental in the American Rescue Plan. They'll continue to be instrumental for us, I believe, in that, helping us guide through that process. So do I hear a motion that we approve to join that organization?
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? I guess we need to discuss where that seven twenty-five would come from.
It comes out of the membership case. It's four oh nine.
Do we have some seven twenty-five in there?
Uh, humpsam.
Okay.
I think it's four oh nine, four four eight one, out of the jail, five, zero one zero.
So we've had a motion and a second to join that association. Any other discussion?
Do you know if we have a fight or something?
Uh, you know, Jim, that's a good question. I'm not sure, but why don't Harold, would you mind if you put that in your motion that if I have to sign something on behalf of the county?
Yes.
All right. And your second?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Melinda, you're going to be mad at me on today because she gave me a breakdown. I don't know where it comes from.
Yeah, we try to shut the talk.
Okay. All right. This is to ratify the amount received from the Texas Division of Emergency Management Coronavirus Relief Fund for the fiscal year 2020. And we've received, now Melinda helped guide me through this, we've received, originally we received eighty thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. And then after Melinda and Ida went through and did all of our qualifying expenses, such as our employees that were off because of the coronavirus, and we were able to receive some other salary funds and things like that, we received an additional three hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So out of that entire Corona Relief Fund, the county received four hundred and four thousand and eighty-five dollars.
If you want to see how the contract was signed, I think I flagged it on July 28.
This contract was signed by me on July 28, 2020. So now my understanding of that amount of money is just in our general fund?
Yes, sir. And originally, it was a different amount. When it was originally brought to court back in July, it was a different amount that we were going to receive. We were, the judge was notified, it was like ten hundred and fifty-two thousand, something like that. And so our twenty percent was going to be fifty-one thousand or fifty thousand something. It's all there. But due to the fact that we received more revenue from that grant, it was necessary for it to be ratified.
Okay. All right. So we're looking for a motion to ratify this relief fund. So do I hear a motion to ratify that fund?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Purnell. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Thank you. All right. The next item, well, let me drop down. Jim Kyrie is not going to be here today, and he asked me if I would take up his item for him. So he had an eye on considering necessary amendments and approval of the renewal of the Hill County Guidelines and criteria for granting tax abatements in the reinvestment number. And he talked to us on Friday about what all that included. And he said the only change he thought we might make is, right now he said it's a two year, we'll look at it every two years and change it. And he had recommended moving it to five years. And so there's nothing for us to sign, but I guess we need to vote on whether to accept the guidelines as they are right now. And if you want to make the accept of the, or not correction, but the, if you want to change it from two-year review to a five-year. So do I hear a motion to approve that criteria?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by, with the five-year, okay, with the change for the five years. Okay. Do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Then our next item is the sheriff's office.
Good morning.
Good day.
Good morning. New personnel, the hiring of Jesus Raturro Peñon, effective date four nineteen of 2021, uncertified sailor, group thirteen, step one, hourly twelve eighty-five.
Jesus Peñon?
Yes.
All right.
The hiring of Joe Santos, effective date five three of twenty-one, uncertified sailor, thirteen one, hourly twelve eighty-five.
Okay.
And we're getting around now to replace Paul Sawyer with MHMR. We had three that put in for it. We allowed MHMR to sit in on interviews and everything, so we're going to be working with that person. They chose Dalton Schultz out of the jail. So we're moving him out of the jail, effective four twenty-eight of twenty-one, moving him to a deputy MHMR, group seventeen, step one, hourly rate of fifteen sixty-five, and he will be working with MHMR.
Okay. All right. So we have two individuals that are on the same pay scale. It's thirteen one, which is an hourly rate of twelve eighty-five per hour. The first one being Jesus Peñon, beginning on April nineteenth of 2021. The second being Joe Santos, on May second of 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve these two?
Make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second?
Is Joe Santos is I thirty?
Oh, is it I thirty? Okay. All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any further discussion on those two? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. And then in regards to Dalton Schultz, he will, as of April twenty-eighth, 2021, go to a group seventeen, step one, which is fifteen sixty-five per hour, and serve in the capacity of the MHMR. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Purnell. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Thank y'all. All right. The next item we have is our district attorney and director.
Pretty sure director. Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here to correct everything I did wrong last time I was here. And first off, I want to correct Vexis' amount. When I told you guys, I told y'all seven thousand. But when we were looking, it is seventy-six hundred a night plus five feet, the extra phone fees that they added. But when Melinda, when I talked to her about, do we have the money and everything, we, I told her seventy-six hundred. So it's all there. I just want to correct the amount of whatever.
Okay.
Seventy-six hundred plus six.
Do I hear a motion to correct that amount from seven thousand to seventy-six hundred?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Purnell. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay. One other thing that I didn't present, you're going to have to do rewiring on a lot of the developments, and I don't think I clarified that Vexis doesn't do the wiring, but Double T Cable Services Inc. is the company that's going to do the wiring. The amount that we have approved is the amount that they presumed it is, but I just kind of let it flow in with Vexis, but it's not through Vexis. We'll pay straight to Double T Cable Services, so we can correct that.
I don't think the motion would just let the record reflect that the wiring will be done by Double T Cable Services.
Okay. And the next thing is the Levitt Sound Equipment for the district court rooms. The, nowhere on his proposal or anything did he say pay for the equipment before, you know, but he did, they invoiced us, and it is really large amounts of the bills. So if we could pay twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty cents of the total bill to Levitt Sound Equipment for, this is for the equipment and materials is what they said.
So that's like half the amount?
No, it's a little, more than half.
Okay.
It's a draw.
All right. So you've heard the request from, to pay the sound equipment, people believe it's Levitt Sound.
Sound Equipment.
In the amount of twenty-seven thousand, four thirty-six, one twenty, as a draw toward the total that we agreed to pay them. Do I hear a motion to approve that draw?
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion?
How much is the total?
Thirty-eight, um, thirty-eight thousand, three seventy-four. Thirty-eight, three seventy-four, twenty.
And when do they got to complete it?
As soon as the equipment comes in. Hopefully before Ju-, uh, May twenty-sixth, when we have a jury in one of the court rates.
Any other discussion?
And that amount is for the court rates.
All right. No other discussion? Everyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all. Sorry about that.
Our next item on the agenda is Mandy Seaton.
Thank you, Judge. It's good to hear. My name is Mandy Seaton, and I'm the regional program leader for family community health with the North Region of Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension Service. And I just want to start out today by telling you how much we appreciate your help and support of our agency and our county extension agents here in Hill County. You have a great group here in Hill County, but your support makes their job easier to do. So we just want you to know how much we appreciate it. And also your patience with us in getting this position filled with the pandemic and everything. And so today, my role is to bring forth our candidate for review for the family community health agent, and it's Ms. Shontae Klossen. And I'm going to let Shontae tell a few things about herself.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a resume cut down. I'm excited to be here to introduce myself. Thank you, Mandy, for the comments. I've been teaching at Plainview High School for the past three years. And prior to that, I was the four-H specialist and checked one for five years. Now, I oversaw twenty-one counties' four-H programs. And prior to that, I was the FCS agent in Exeter County for five years. That's just a little bit about my background. I have a bachelor of science degree in family consumer sciences. I earned the master's in education from Lamar University. And I'm about a year away from completing my PhD in family consumer sciences. So I've had a lot of experiences here in Plainview the past three years, so I think we're going to help make an impact, positive impact on Hill County families. And I'm really excited about joining the extension staff. Are there any questions I can answer?
Any question? Ms. Klossen? Just for full disclosure, she is the wife of Michael Klossen.
Yes, sir.
But Michael and Mandy have been visiting with me, and this is all, this is not a nepotism situation, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
From what I understand, you're going to be the one that actually supervises.
Okay. I thought so. There has been, there has been, something was brought up about a week before last, I was going to be her supervisor, but since that is not in my job description, our agency HR said that I could not supervise her. And so with districts one and two, the DEA, which is Michael's position in district one, has a sister in district one. And so he was just recently hired. So the, the original plan was I would supervise both, both of those FCH agents. Well, it came to light about a week before last that that's not in my job description. So what we're going to do, yes, it's been kind of a crazy process. What we're going to do is Michael and Josh are going to switch. And so the DEA in district one will supervise Shontae, and the DEA, Michael in district two, will supervise Molly in Briscoe, Hall Counties. And then I will provide impact on her performance review.
I know it's complicated, but Michael called me on the phone.
Okay.
Well, I'm not trying to throw a lunch, or anything. I'm just trying to point it out for transparency, so that, you know.
Yes, sir. I, I, as far as, no, the nepotism thing, I've, I've kind of handled the whole interview process and meeting with Shontae and taking the paperwork through. And I don't think we, I don't think I shared with you that her start might date, it will be July sixth.
All right. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions?
No.
Well, thank you again. We appreciate all y'all do for us.
Okay. Well, now that I've thrown that out there, and somebody jumped on that hand, then we'll go ahead. Do I hear a motion that we approve Shontae's disposition?
I'll move it.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Purnell. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll tell Andy if y'all set up, hey, then I join you for lunch.
I'm waiting for that lunch. That's a good deal.
And Andy, if you need to go cook, you can. All right. Our next item is Commissioner Presempre.
Yes, we, we're going to hire Fabian Ramos. He's going to be our new equipment operator. And he's going to start at thirteen one, at thirteen seventy-three an hour. And his effective date will be this past Saturday, five eight, just as it's the start of the paper.
Okay. All right. Do you need your connect before?
Yes.
Motion. Do you have a motion to hire Fabian Ramos at thirteen one, thirteen seventy-three an hour, effective eight, eight eight? Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. And then our next item is Commissioner Presempre.
Yes, I want to discuss the discontinue a portion of County Road 245, in particular a section of this road between County Road A, which joins us with Lamb County, and County Road C. This particular section of road has been a problem quite a few times due to the water erosion, receiving tremendous amount of water flowing when we do it. Over the years, we've been losing more and more of this road. There are wash dulleys on the north side of it, deep dulleys, and it's narrowed up. We've looked at various options, all of which are very expensive and costly to navigate. The first thing we have to do is divert water to another direction. We've looked at one of the property owners on the south side of the road that's on board with that, divert water to their land, their terraces, to slow it down. We produce the water flow. The property owner on the north side is not, they didn't want to do anything like that on their land, which is their right. But it's pretty much fruitless for us to do anything else unless we can divert that water flow. So I'm asking this morning to discontinue a portion of that road, which is three and a half kilometers long. And discontinue basins on it and close it to through traffic that the county would, if we discontinue, we would maintain the roadway through that area in the event we, at some point, decide to do something else. So I would put in form of a motion that we discontinue this portion of County Road 245 and will put signs on each of the roads directing the traffic to another route.
Okay. So you've heard the request and the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. That concludes our agenda for today, so it is, I show it to be nine thirty, so we'll stay in the journey. Thank you.
Thank you.